Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the special town meeting. First, I'd like to have everyone stand if you can and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First, I would ask you all to join me for a moment of silence. Walter Sandrowski's wife Cheryl passed away. Her funeral was this past Saturday, and a longtime resident, I think most of her license at life in Lancaster, so please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you. As far as voting, everyone should have received a clicker on the way in, like that. And before we do go to voting, Amanda Cannon, our clerk, will give a tutorial on that. But with that said, we'll keep going. We do have additional rooms this evening. We have David Carr and Jesse Tarbill in the gym and the cafeteria, and so we do have additional people that may speak there. Now, for introductions, and please bear with me, because this is a big crowd. Starting from my left, we have Mara Bailey, Tanya Rich, Laura Friend, Kurt Downing is their superintendent, Joe Gleason is the chairman of the Nishoba Regional Building Committee, Sharon Park, Ken Fromer, somebody moved a couple of things around on me, so I think next we have Jackie Reinert, Shannon Simon, and Kim Early, and then at the end we have Paul Dominov. Those are all related to the building committee, the school committee, and Paul is an architect, Then, starting in the back, circling around, we have Kate Hodges, our town administrator, Andrew Benetelli, Town Council, followed by the Select Board, Steve Kerrigan, Jason Allison, Alex Turner, followed by the Finance Committee, Emily Kerrigan, Stan Starr, Jocelyn Mylot, Michelle Vasquez, and Dick Trussell. Coming down the right side, Cheryl Garapi, our finance director, and Amanda Cannon, our clerk. Have I left anyone out? Okay, thank you. Just by way of background, and I've had some questions where people say, well, is this a two-thirds vote since it has to do with spending? And the answer to that is no. And Kate Hodges supplied me with this section, Mass. General Law, Chapter 71, Section 16D, which reads, "A regional school committee is authorized to incur debt without the express approval of its member towns. Specifically upon two-thirds of the committee members, the debt may be incurred. However, after that vote, the committee must send notice of the debt to each member community select board. The board then has 60 days to call a town meeting to disapprove the debt. That vote is a simple majority. If that debt is disapproved by any one community, the district cannot incur the debt unless another method of borrowing is allowed." So to be clear, this is a simple majority vote. Okay, I think we're ready to start with Article One. And who is the presenter of that? Mr. Gleason?
Yes.
You can come up here. And before Joe starts, we're given a certain amount of time, and I think we talked 10 minutes is more than sufficient for the presentation. There are a whole bunch of people here who can answer questions, but for or against, again, it's three minutes, and please keep it on point.
All right. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. On behalf of the Nishoba Regional High School Building Committee and the Nishoba Regional School District, I move that the town hereby approve the amount of $241,714,926 borrowing authorized by the Nishoba Regional School District for purposes of paying costs of a new Nishoba Regional High School located 12 Green Road, Bolton, Mass., 01740, including site work and athletic fields, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto, which the school facility shall have an anticipated useful life as an educational facility for the instruction of schoolchildren of at least 60 years, and for which the district may be eligible for a school construction grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, set amount to be expended at the direction of the Nishoba Regional School District's Project School Building Committee, that the town acknowledges that the MSBA Grants Program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA. In any project cost the district incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the district and its member municipalities, provided further that any grant that district may receive from the MSBA for the project shall not exceed the lesser of 155 and .09% of eligible approved project costs as determined by the MSBA, or the total maximum grant amount determined by the MSBA, provided that the approval of the district's borrowing by this vote shall be amounts required for the payment of interest and principal on said borrowing from the limitations on taxes imposed pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 21C, also known as Proposition Two and a Half, that the amount of borrowing authorized by the district shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the project funding agreement that may be executed between the district and the MSBA.
Sam? That's it? Well, under 10 minutes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
I second the motion.
Motion moved and seconded. Yes.
As I indicated, Mr. Moderator indicated, my name is Joseph Gleason, and I am the chairman of the Nishoba Regional High School Building Committee and a representative of the Nishoba Regional School District here from Lancaster. On behalf of my fellow Lancaster members of the Nishoba Regional High School Building Committee and the Nishoba Regional School District Committee, who are present with me this evening on the stage in support of Article One, and I want to thank all of you for being here this evening to take part in what we believe is a once-in-a-generation opportunity to bring a new state-of-the-art high school building to the Nishoba Regional School District. To begin, it is important for the voters here this evening to understand that the voting members of both the Nishoba Regional High School Building Committee and the Nishoba Regional District Committee, who are essentially cosponsoring this article, are the parents, the neighbors, the property owners, and the taxpayers here in the town of Lancaster, and all have a vested interest in both the entitlements and obligations attendant to the passage of this article. On August 2nd, 2023, the Nishoba Regional School District Committee voted unanimously on a recommendation of the Nishoba Regional High School Building Committee, whose recommendation was also unanimous, to incur debt in a not-to-exceed amount of $241,714,926 for the construction of a new Nishoba Regional High School at the locus of the current high school in Bolton, Mass. The cost of this new high school is to be shared by the three sending communities of the Nishoba Regional School District, with additional assistance of the Massachusetts School Building Authority, whose Board of Directors also voted unanimously on August 30th to contribute a maximum facilities grant of $64,793,541. This vote on August 2nd was a culmination of nearly three years of tireless work on behalf of the Nishoba Regional High School Building Committee relative to its efforts to address and remediate deteriorating conditions and educational restrictions at the current Nishoba Regional High School. While the work of the Nishoba Regional High School Building Committee began in earnest in December of 2020, these efforts to address the myriad of ongoing problems at the current Nishoba Regional High School had its seminal moment nearly 10 years ago. Thus, this article before you serves as the byproduct of a decade-long endeavor to bring improved access to educational resources for all children of the Nishoba Regional School District. We are therefore here tonight to ask for your support for the construction of a new Nishoba Regional High School. The new Nishoba Regional High School will be energy-efficient and compliant with all federal and state regulations relative to both educational programming space and accessibility for children who may present with mobility challenges and/or neurodiversity, and it should be noted that the current Nishoba Regional High School is woefully out of compliance in both these areas. The new Nishoba Regional High School will provide a modern and innovative learning environment for our children and will be equipped with the most advanced and progressive facilities and technology. The new Nishoba Regional High School will prepare our children to be leaders in technology, sustainability, and other critical fields. The new Nishoba Regional High School will provide a safe, secure, and adequately sized spaces that support student learning and the curriculum while ensuring the best possible educational experience. Lastly, and probably most importantly, this new Nishoba Regional High School will meet the all-important accreditation standards set by the New England Association of Schools and Colleges, which is the accrediting authority for the Nishoba Regional School District. In 2015, the New England Association of Schools and Colleges cited the Nishoba Regional High School and the Nishoba Regional High School District, excuse me, the Nishoba Regional School District, for insufficient and inadequate classroom space and deficient conditions in regards to the physical plant at the high school. Be advised that member schools are compelled to heed the warnings of the New England Association of Schools and Colleges or otherwise face probationary status and possible eventual loss of accreditation. The decennial reassessment of the New England Association of Schools and Colleges is fast approaching in 2025, so it is imperative that we act now. So with regards to a new Nishoba Regional High School, let us take a look at what has brought us here tonight, what is possible, and how we bring a new Nishoba Regional High School to fruition with the following short video. Today, I have a pivotal moment that will shape the future of education in Bolton, Lancaster, and Stone. We stand at a crossroads facing critical decisions that concern the future of high school education for the residents of our towns. These decisions hinge on our aging school building and the incredible opportunities that await us. The Nishoba Regional High School opened its doors in 1961. Back then, our world was centered around industrial production, and our educational system was tailored to prepare students for jobs of that era. However, the world has transformed significantly since then. We now live in a rapidly evolving digital age driven by technology and sustainability. The dramatic advancement of technology over decades has coincided with the deterioration of our existing facility that lacks compliance for building codes, energy conservation codes, and structural standards. Handicap accessibility, subpar, and our building systems are outdated and inefficient. The building envelope, including windows, walls, and the roof, is in dire needed attention. Our classrooms are undersized, and the educational spaces struggle to meet modern standards. Acoustic issues persist, and there's a lack of collaborative learning spaces within the school. A new Nishoba Regional High School presents a unique opportunity to adapt to these modern needs, but will be perfectly designed to prepare our students for leadership roles in technology, sustainability, artificial intelligence, and beyond. This cutting-edge institution will foster innovation, collaboration, and creativity, nurturing the essential skills our students require for success in the 21st century. The NEA standards for accreditation emphasize the importance of school buildings and facilities that ensure safety, support diversity, and comply with federal and state laws. Our school district must address these issues with both short-term and long-term plans for capital and maintenance needs. Taking action now will ensure we meet accreditation standards in the future. In 2018, the Nishoba Regional School Committee voted to engage with the Massachusetts School Building Authority to address the issues with our aging building. Despite initial injunction, our determination led to acceptance in the feasibility consideration period. In 2020, our town supported a $1.5 million order for feasibility. Several options for addressing our school's issues were presented to the community during feasibility. The first option, a base repair, was considered, but it was determined that the MSBA would not participate in this option, leaving taxpayers responsible for the full estimated cost of $110 to $120 million to address all the building's issues. This option would only repair the current issues without any improvement to the existing building. The next option, renovation, was deemed impractical due to structural limitations. The steel and concrete structure wouldn't allow for necessary improvements that meet the education plan developed in feasibility. Additionally, the building's design with concrete window casings and support beams made correcting these issues unfeasible without demolishing and rebuilding the entire structure. A third option, addition renovation, was considered but posed challenges. It would significantly impact the learning environment, requiring students remain in the building during construction. Modular classrooms for short-term leases would be necessary, and the project timeline would extend to approximately eight years with an estimated cost of $202 to $212 million to taxpayers. The fourth and preferred option was the construction of entirely new building, with five variations explored. Community feedback and the school building committee's recommendation align with Option 4D for new construction. This option was estimated to cost around $223 to $233 million, with a total taxpayer cost of $175 to $185 million. At the conclusion of feasibility, it was estimated that a new building would cost On August 30th, 2023, the MSBA approved a facilities grant of $64,793,451, leaving the estimated taxpayer share of no more than $176,921,475. According to the regional agreement, the three towns will share the incurred debt based on their residence attendance at the Nishoba Regional High School. As of October 1st, 2022, the shares for each town are as follows: Bolton, 31.87%, Lancaster, 32.97%, and Stone, 35.16%. We understand that cost considerations are of utmost importance, and it is our responsibility to be transparent about the potential impact on our residents. Let's take a closer look at the median residential assessments in our town as they play a crucial role in understanding how the potential cost of our projects translate into manageable figures for our residents. In Bolton, the median residential assessment stands at $712,172. For both residents, the impact in property assessments will range from approximately $1,550 to $1,750 per year. Turning our attention to Lancaster, where the median residential assessment is $456,025. Residents here may anticipate an annual increase of approximately $1,150 to $1,350. Lastly, in the town of Stone, where the median residential assessment stands at $640,760, residents can expect an annual increase of $1,300 to $1,500 per year. These figures are meant to provide a clear picture of the potential impact on your household budgets. We acknowledge that decisions of this magnitude carry significant weight, but it's essential to keep in mind the long-term benefits that a new school will bring to our students and communities. In conclusion, I urge you to consider the tremendous value that this investment in education will bring to our towns. It's not merely about the numbers, it's about securing a brighter future for our children and the continued prosperity of our communities. As we proceed to deliberations, we ask that you keep in mind that is the position of the Nishoba Regional High School Building Committee, that there is essentially no, no vote for this bill project, as there is no zero-cost option for the residents of the Nishoba Regional School District if, in fact, this article is defeated. In the simplest of terms, the Nishoba Regional High School is a structure that is currently beyond its intended lifespan. The feasibility study commissioned and paid for by the taxpayers of the Nishoba Regional School District concluded that the most fiscally and educationally sound path for this district to follow is the new construction, as the benefits of new construction clearly outweigh the benefits of renovation and repair. The cost attendant to just baseline repairs wasn't as significant. It did not serve to address the educational deficiencies identified by the New England Association of Schools and Colleges and would not meet the educational needs of our children. In fact, the feasibility study indicated that a renovation of, in addition to the current high school, would be more expensive than a new build, would take longer, and would be disruptive to instruction. Should the voters vote to turn down this article, we will not only be losing the opportunity to bring a new regional high school, Nishoba Regional High School, to the district, we will also be losing the all-important partnership with the Massachusetts School Building Authority, where upon a failure of any of the three sending communities of the Nishoba Regional School District to support this effort will result in the immediate and ignominious withdrawal of their financial support. Upon this occurrence of our three sending communities, we will be left with a piecemeal and annual, excuse me, annual request from the Nishoba Regional School District for funding for capital improvements at the high school for such things as a new roof, new heating and ventilation equipment, new windows and doors, and with the ever-present and exceedingly costly and difficult task of remediating the current aging structure to meet mandated spatial and accessibility requirements. A new Nishoba Regional High School was envisioned not only to benefit our children but to further serve all residents of the district. In its infancy, the Nishoba Regional High School Building Committee prioritized the need to have a new Nishoba Regional High School serve as a community hub. The new Nishoba Regional High School is committed to making the new Nishoba Regional High School a community center by hosting various public and private events, performances, workshops, and adult educational classes, clubs, as well as offering the facilities for local sporting associations and inviting our local Council on Aging to avail themselves of the spaces and facilities of a new Nishoba Regional High School, which will include a new American with Disabilities Act compliant auditorium, a new multimedia center, and a commons area for meetings and gatherings. It is therefore the communal belief of the Nishoba Regional High School Building Committee that a new Nishoba Regional High School will serve to provide enriching cultural experiences for residents of all ages. Supporting the construction of a new Nishoba Regional High School is an investment in the future of Lancaster. It will be a commitment to the growth and development of Lancaster and its residents, ensuring that Lancaster remains an attractive place to live, work, and raise a family. I thank you for your attention, and I yield back to the moderator.
Thank you. Thank you, Joe. Something that I felt while I introduced everybody was asked of me earlier today if Superintendent Downing, Assistant Superintendent Friend, who are not residents of the community, could be here and talk. I said yes, and certainly Paul Dominov, the architect, if there are questions for him. So those are the only ones that have been requested to speak who are non-residents. Just a housekeeping for me. Am I correct that there's nobody in the cafeteria? The monitor is blank on that.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now we're going to open it up for questions, responses, comments for and against. If you're going to speak, please come to the microphone. As always, announce your name, your address, and to be recognized. Yes, sir.
It's the moderator. There we go. My name is Dave Dunn, 129 Market Street. I'm here to speak in favor of this, ah, but, of all things in life, there's a but. And the but is that I built a home in Lancaster 20 years ago, it's a retirement home. As you retire and turn 80, going this year, your costs are very, very difficult. And so I have a question for the Board of Selectmen and for the Finance Committee as to, how do we deal with putting out plans as to how we can continue to live in this town? It'd be cheaper for me to move to Clinton than it would be to stay here. And that shouldn't be the way that you view your life. So I asked the Selectmen to speak toward what do they plan to find a way to generate revenue, and to the Finance Committee as to how do we get out of this financial bind. The last part of it is that, to the Selectmen, I understand the town of Lancaster lost somewhere around $50,000 or $60,000 in revenue coming in from the solar grid, and I wonder how that happened and how we get that money back. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Given the fact that we have the screen down and the Select Board and the Finance Committee in the back row, I've invited if they want to speak from the microphone that's at their table, that's fine. If they want to come forward and use this microphone, they're fine. So, but I'm going to first ask, who wants to tackle that question?
I'll tackle it strong, word. I will attempt to answer it. Those of you who've known me most of my life know I don't tackle many things, I'm a very athletic fellow. But my name is Steve Kerrigan, I'm the chair of the Select Board, a former employee of Mr. Dunn from when I was in college, 100 years ago. I was just talking with Stan Starr about how generous you were with that job. We hear that all the time, and we hear the concern that you have. We've been working hard to diversify our tax base here in town, both the North Lancaster Project, the Planning Board just approved a project on Fort Pron Road, there's work going to be done at the DKM land, and who knows what's going to happen at AUC. There's no easy answer. The only way we can continue to address trying to find ways to lower your taxes is by increasing and diversifying our tax base. We talked about this when I ran for Select Board, that we cannot provide a reduction in property taxes for residents if we're just relying solely on residential property taxes to fund this town. It's just too big of a budget. So we have to find ways to diversify our tax base. We've been looking into that, and frankly, having some decent successes. We did have a couple of years where typically the town would approve six, seven projects over the course of a year, and that would add more tax revenue to the town. We had a couple of years with one, one with two, and that really hurts our ability to help find ways to lower that tax burden. Secondly, at the annual town meeting, we did approve a tax fairness committee that is working towards senior tax abatements and finding ways to do a sliding scale for our seniors and those who are challenged in our community economically so that their burden could be lessened and keep them in their homes, allow them to age in their homes, while not, you know, jacking up their tax base. So there's no easy answer, no one answer. But I will say this, that projects like this do help with making the town an attractive place to be. We've just got to find ways to diversify the tax base so that we can all afford to be here and stay here. Did that come close to answering your question, Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Your turn. Thank you.
Now, anyone from...
Oh, and the solar field thing, apparently, is a rumor out there, we did not lose $50,000 on the solar field.
How much did we lose?
Zero.
Zero dollars.
Okay.
Okay? The best number to lose, zero dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the Finance? Mr. Starr?
Good evening, all. My name is Stan Starr, I live on Skorishale Lane in Lancaster. I've been approached by neighbors, friends, over the last couple of weeks, couple of months, as to why we are in the situation we're in fiscally. And there's a lot of reasons, I guess, for it, but they're curable. I share some facts with you folks, both as a former Selectman in town for seven years, and now they convinced me I should get onto FinCom, and here I am. We're facing a lot of serious financial distress going forward in this town. The need for a new high school is warranted, in my opinion, and I'll vote in favor for what that's worth. We're having a difficult time in terms of aging structure that's 62 years old. It's not going to get less expensive to build, and we have no guarantee that $62 million from the state will be available to help us in the future. Those are the reasons that I've chosen, and not reluctantly, but as needed. The other expense that is seldom spoken about, and I want to get this out to the public, is something called OPEB, which I suspect that 95% of the people here have no clue what that stands for. Other post-employment benefits for our district employees in the school. We have a responsibility as a town for $15 million of the approximately $45 million to fund that particular. We've got less than 2% exposure, roughly just less than $1 million. That's the future of medical payments and retirement payments for our retirees within the school system. That can't be ignored, and I wanted to bring that up and bring it to the fore. Three years ago, there was a special town meeting held, and at that point, again, myself on the board and my two Select colleagues had warned the town that we're coming to a crossroads within the town financially. Folks, we're here. It's happening. We've got to do something. And by doing something, and pardon my notes because I've done this so many times, I just want to make sure I don't miss anything, I'm sorry. After three years of public meetings ongoing and discussions, the majority of the members of the Planning Board at that time chose not to proceed. Six months later, after that timeframe, we have a new Planning Board, and hopefully that'll bring some relief to our town. We lost an ability to put a major operation in North Lancaster. A little company called Target wanted to put in a warehouse, and I know there's opposition, I understand it, the beauty of the town, but we are the seventh most expensive, we're in the seven percentile of expenses for taxes, real estate taxes, in the Commonwealth. Put another way, 321 towns have lower tax rates than Lancaster. Why? Why? Well, two reasons. We have almost half of them develop a land in federal and state hands, and the rest also is in nonprofits. Understood? Understood? We have to take advantage of our last resource in this town, of any substance, and develop that North Lancaster property. We have to start working with potential developers and not chase them away, and not find reasons to postpone. Postpone, kick the can. There's no place else to kick this can. I almost said it. This can, down the running for it. Sorry. You know what I mean. The good news, if you will, is 696 Fort Pon Road was just approved by the new ERP Planning Board. It's going to bring in approximately $1 million to this town, sorely needed, commercial base. Expand the commercial base. And no way I'm going to get through while I'm going to get through here, so I apologize. I did my best in here to try to let you know. Work with, become part of, volunteer, get involved. This is not a, you know, this is not a nicety. This is a necessity. Wake up, Lancaster, because we're not going to have people sticking around here for any of the expenses that are going to be happening going forward. We have a solution. You have to take advantage of it and support it. They're not making any more land. I guess I'll end with that note. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Lenia, you're next, but if you're going to defer, could you help the microphone get down to this woman?
Just pull it out.
Yeah. Yes, if you'd announce your name and where you live.
I'm Joan Eastman, 602 Red Hill Drive in Lancaster. And I would just like to establish the motto for the town of Lancaster to say that if we have no money, we should have no spending, and we should use the revenue that comes flowing in. And I would like to honor this on this vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just one thing. Thank you, Frank. Yes, Lenia.
Lenia Lake, Missouri, 1394 Main Street. I am here to speak in favor of the school and project as it stands. I attended Neshoba. I arrived there in 1971, just 10 years after it was built, and it was an Sari's key then. And the addition had just been put on. The rooms on the interior of the newer section are like cells. They have no windows. The air circulation is miserable. We made some strides when the 2000, year 2000 edition or renovation was made. And the auditorium that was musty, you know, when I went there and I went back to, you know, hearing student, you know, hearing nights. The piddling was leaky. It was miserable. This is high time we do this. And I'm just about to retire, and I have a four-bedroom house. You don't want me leaving and having a family move in lots for our school children. So we need to address the taxes. Somebody should light a fire under the North Lancaster people who are, had the vote go their way, and things are tied up in litigation. That needs to be solved so we can have more income for the town. So I just urge everybody to vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Good. Announce your name first, please.
Sure. I'm Roy Reese, 125 Harvard Road.
Okay. And Mr. Reese had asked about having a slide, and I suggested if he got it to the select board that that would accommodate. Is it up there?
Right here.
Okay, thank you. Go, proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. When I first saw the Neshoba High School proposal, I realized it would have massive financial impact on Lancaster and dramatic strategic impact on the education of our children. I knew I had to do some financial analysis myself to know how I should vote. In doing that, I identified three probable scenarios. The first one, if we vote yes tonight, is scenario one, which is what the committee has proposed and covered so far. If we vote no tonight, then I think we are on a path over the next few years to deal with either a scenario two, in which we take a few years, replan, come up with a new approach, and do essentially this building five years from now, or scenario three, where we do essentially this building five years from now, but we do not have the MSBA funding that they talked about. Next slide. My conclusions from this analysis are as follows. In a moment. Next slide. I think she's working on it. Okay. My conclusions. While voting yes is expensive, it is the $58 million they've talked about, budget is the $103 million principal and interest we have to pay for the loan. It's a number we should keep in mind. Okay? And while that's expensive, voting no and having to build a new high school in five years because of the inflationary cost on construction is much more expensive, between $50 and $88 million more. It's an incredible set of numbers. If we lose the MSBA funding, it will almost double our costs over what we would, could vote for tonight with a yes vote. The taxes increased on the average home are, as shown here, more in the next slide.
Sorry, three minutes is up. No.
Okay, here's a slide that shows all the financial projections I did. And essentially, these are the cost numbers you've seen before, the $241 million. This is what it would be in five years for the, to do the building. This is what would be the emergency repairs that Joe Gleason and others talked about if we have to extend the life of this building. Here's the MSBA reimbursement. The bottom line number here to Lancaster is, if we vote yes tonight, we're looking forward to a $103 million bond issue. If we vote no, in five years, we're looking at something on the order of $153 million or $190 million, either a $50 million increase or an $88 million increase. You can see what that does to our taxes. It increases by 50% to 86%. Huge numbers. Well, now that we know what we're talking about, what the costs are, I wanted to cover two issues. The first issue that I've heard talked about on Facebook a lot is, did the committee look at enough options? And did they really pursue not building a new building? You've heard the presentations here tonight. I won't go into that anymore. My sense is, from listening to them, they really did. The next slide. We're going to skip this slide and move to the next one. The question that's been asked by Dave and others is, well, how do we pay for this? Particularly for senior citizens, I think the following. Short term today, there is the Lancaster Senior Citizen Property Tax Work Off Program, and there are other state and local programs, which you can find out information about on the Council on Aging. Medium term, there's a Tax Fairness Committee, which Steve Kerrigan has mentioned, and also the two warehouse complexes will start paying on the order of $1 million a year in taxes, which is 30% of what our high school costs, our high school tax cost would be. And fundamentally going forward, as Mr. Starr has indicated and Mr. Kerrigan has indicated, Massachusetts towns have concluded that they can't cover the costs of educational costs based primarily from taxes on the average home. You simply can't do it. The costs go up way too high. Lancaster has to expand and diversify our tax base. You phrase, you heard from Steve Kerrigan, you're hearing from me, you heard it from a stand too. We have to expand and diversify. So my conclusions are, there are no simple or inexpensive answers that I was able to find. There are intelligent choices, and for the good of our finances and the education of our students, I urge you to vote yes. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, Roland Moran, 651 Red Tail Way. I'm speaking in support of this. I see the high school from a different perspective than just about all of you, except those who you might be actually teaching in the building, or Mrs. Friend and Mr. Downing, who have been in the building. I've been a substitute teacher in this district for seven years now. I have spent a lot of time in that high school. I'm spending two more days there this Thursday and Friday. These kids deserve a better facility. The building is obsolete, and I think in some places it's dangerous. So all I'm doing is, all I want to do is, please, I'm a senior citizen now, bona fide senior citizen. Right where Dave Dunn is here, who I also know from another organization. I don't want to see my tax bill go up, but I owe it to the children of this town to do that. And I'm going to vote yes. And I hope all of you vote yes, and thinking about your, not only your kids or your budget, thinking about the grandkids and your neighbors' kids. We need it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Maureen Dugan. I teach at 80, I live at 87 Old County Road in Lancaster. I taught at Neshoba for 35 years. I saw the absurd entrance to the front of that building. Money was spent on the incredibly absurd intricacies of that entrance. We were told that we needed a new auditorium because the old one didn't fit all the kids. When the day the new one was opened, it did not fit all the kids. I am so afraid of more financial mismanagement of this. We paid $19 million. We haven't finished paying it. 22 years ago, we're still paying. I am so concerned about mismanagement of this. Forgive me, I'm going to look at my notes in a minute. But when we try to sell this as having, as being, getting this building ready for the next 60 years, I cannot believe that anyone seriously believes that. We cannot look around corners for the next 60 years. Why wasn't the ADA, the ADA has been around for a very long time, why isn't the brand-new, well, 22 years old now, auditorium, why wasn't it ADA compliant to begin with? The roof. We're here and we need a new roof on the school. All of us have to budget for our roofs. Why hasn't that been budgeted for? That building is built for 1,000 kids. As of Friday, I was told it has 846 kids. Why don't we have enough room? Why are we saying we don't have room for the kids? When it was built for more than that. I think that's it. I am, I love kids. I am still teaching. I love kids. I want them better taken care of than this last, than this last piece was taken care of. I'm so afraid that it will be mismanaged. It saddens me. I am voting against this. It saddens me.
Mr. Moderator.
Thank you.
Would you please respond to that?
Well, yes, I thought Mr. Downing was going to get, go ahead, and then you wanted to speak as well.
I just want to say that our efforts over the last three years were a collaborative effort. And in response to the speaker's questions, rhetorical or otherwise, I'd like to turn the microphone over to our superintendent director. He can speak more to the conditions at the facility. So without further ado, Superintendent Downing.
Hello, everyone. Kurt Downing, Superintendent of Neshoba Regional School District. Is that good? In terms of the condition of the building, forgive me, I didn't quite hear it correctly. That's my issue, not anyone else's. The current facility right now has been under examination for over 10 years. There's a space study group that was formed back in 2013 that looked at not just the enrollment in terms of the capacity of the rooms, but the condition and quality of them as well. So when we think about the educational program, and Mr. Moderator, I would like to invite Ms. Friend to talk about the condition of our science labs in a moment, if that's allowed.
Yep.
Currently, our classroom sizes are 725 square feet. The recommended required size by the MSBA for funding is 850 square feet at a minimum. So we're 125 square feet below that. The building is made of steel and concrete from a time when that was the preferred design. The walls cannot be moved. They cannot be adapted. They cannot be changed. And the windows around the facility are encased in concrete cast in and support the beam structures resting on those window structures. So we can't even replace that without major mitigation. So if we're going to look at the quality of our programming concurrently, that's when the New England Association of Schools and Colleges came in in 2015 and gave initial notice that the facility was not up to standard for NAAS standards, and gave the school district notice and accredited the school system at the time. We are coming up to that reaccreditation in two years, of which we're going to have to demonstrate that we've addressed the issues that were last presented in those NIASC reports. And so as we look at that, we have to address the facility. The renovation of the facility could not even be a consideration because of the concrete walls and steel infrastructure of the building. It's just not even a consideration. The addition renovation, to keep the areas of the school that were most recently built, was actually a solution that was $25 million more costly than this solution. And that addition renovation that was addressed back 25 years ago did not address anything in the core educational program of the building. It was simply to address some of the failing infrastructure of the building at the time and do renovations to the auditorium and the gymnasium. So it did not address core programming at all. And at this time, I would like to invite Ms. Friend up to the podium, our Assistant Superintendent, so she can share with you the conditions of a key part of our learning program, specifically in the science labs. Ms. Friend?
Thank you, Superintendent Downing. It's an honor to speak with everyone this evening. I'm a longtime Neshoba educator. I've taught and worked and served in the district for 25 years, and my commitment to Neshoba couldn't be any greater. So thank you, and thank you for being here tonight. I wanted to speak to the conditions of our science labs in particular. We know that our current landscape is changing. Our, the landscape is evolving quickly, and the World Economic Forum has identified advanced technology and science as being critical for our students as they move forward from us, from high school and beyond. A bit about the current state of our science labs at Neshoba as follows. We currently have 10 science labs at Neshoba. Five of them are original, built in 1961. Five of them were built in 1970. So five of our science labs were built, excuse me, before man landed on the moon. They have not been renovated. 2004 NIASC report, as Superintendent Downing mentioned, identified the need for science renovations. In 2012 and 2013, the MSBA identified the deficiencies of our science labs and eligibility for inclusion in our science lab initiative. The deficiencies included inadequate ventilation and sufficient space to conduct science labs with the students in the square footage of the space. In 2013, the towns did not find a time to vote for the science lab initiative, and so it was turned down. In 2015, NIASC once again reported identified science deficiencies. They are as follows. Science labs are not equipped with proper ventilation, fume hoods, or proper sanitation. Shower and eyewash are not placed impractically. Gas jets work inconsistently. There's water leaking from the top of faucets and gaps between our sinks and benches, creating unsafe conditions for our students. As well, locked storage for chemicals is problematic. In the entire school, we have only one science lab that contains a two-foot chemical fume hood, which is too small to be of practical use. We have inconsistency of heating in the cooling system in the building, which causes issues with temperature and humidity. issues with temperature and humidity. All of these conditions impact our teachers, who are incredibly strong and dedicated and work diligently to provide quality experiences for our students. But the reality is, due to the conditions in the space and the unsafe conditions, our students' learning is impacted, to the point where chemical safety, microbiology labs, electrical labs, advanced technology, general science labs, advanced technology and sanitation needs all prohibit our teachers from creating learning experiences for our students that they need as they step forward from us and step into the world. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Friend. Yes, Mr. Gifford.
Ralph Gifford, 861, George Hill Road. I was also built, by the way, before man landed on the moon. And unfortunately, no renovations have come forward for me. Congratulations to the school committee or the building committee. I think for the options they considered, they have, it appears, chosen the best option available. And I'm sure it's a difficult consideration. My questions pertain to just how far their considerations go. So the existing Neshoba, 60-something years old, how much has our district population grown during those 60 years? And what is our growth projection for the new school going forward? I'm told we have based it on a 10-year growth estimate. And if that is the case, then we will be back here before these bonds are paid, asking for more money, just like we funded the improvements that have been mentioned by a prior speaker that we still haven't paid off. So when we start to look at this sort of planning, we need to be looking further down the road. If we're going to put together a plan and if we're going to spend a lot of money, let's make sure that it's really going to be good money, that we're not going to be throwing away money like apparently we did when we funded the auditorium and the entranceway. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, Mr. Moderator, there's really nobody, I'm sorry, you have to stand further away from this microphone, there's really nobody in our district who knows more about the population trends than our superintendent. He's given numerous representations on this issue at our district committee meetings and as part of our.
Get a little closer to him. He's telling me that, huh?
He's given numerous presentations, both to the district committee and to the building committee. I challenge anybody in this district to challenge our superintendent on growth trends with regards to student population, so.
Call Ken Farmer. Can you speak to that?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I will be happy to talk about the enrollment. And, Mr. Moderator, if I can ask Mr. Ken Farmer to join me and he can address the options, because I think I've heard two parts to that question.
Yes.
The enrollment of the Neshoba Regional School District is approximately 830 students right now. We'll have an official number in a few weeks when we do our October 1 count. And this school is rated for 925 students at a utilization percentage of 85%. That means the total capacity of the high school will be 1,088. And in looking at the analysis of the current program and all the zoning articles that are available in all three towns, we would look at what the potential rate of, and if we use the max rate, and I have to say, I need to give due credit to our colleague Dick Trussell, resident of Lancaster, who is very involved in discussing these enrollment issues with me, that even if we took maximum scenarios around 40B housing, and all of those developments were developed right now in all three towns, and applying an attendance rate in the school district, which is right around 88% for students between the ages of 5 and 18, all those developments would add 107 students to the district from all three towns tomorrow. That would put us somewhere around the 925 to 950 mark. Those projections are based upon 10-year projections from the, that's what the MSBA requires. And here's the important thing to note about that. The MSBA is the one that determines that number. The school district does not determine that number. However, in the process of getting to that number, it was lower, and it was through the advocacy of the school district, working with the MSBA, that we were able to get them to come in at 925 students at a utilization rate of 85%. In regards to the enrollment trends of the school district, in the most recent five to six years, they've been going down. And that is not because students are necessarily choosing to go away, it's because in our towns, the census, the number of school-aged children between 5 and 18 in the last five years, has gone down. I will note, in Lancaster, it has remained level. It's in the town of Stowe where it's decreased significantly over the last few years, along with the advent of the Minuteman High School. Lancaster attendance at Minuteman High School has remained level, were currently 56 students. But just this past year, the town of Stowe exceeded that at 61 students, when they had 15 students just five years ago. So there's lots of impact in terms of what our enrollment looks like. But we are consistent over time maintaining the numbers where we currently are at. And we do have the room with the numbers provided by the MSBA at 925 students at a utilization rate of 85% to house any students that come along to us in this 10-year projection. In regards to the options for consideration around the project, I would like to invite Lancaster resident Ken Farmer.
Good evening. Most of you may or may not know me, know my name, but I am a Lancaster resident since I was about in kindergarten. I went to this school, well, the school next door. I graduated from Neshoba. My wife, we celebrate our 24th wedding anniversary today. She also went to Neshoba. We recently, our twins just recently graduated from Neshoba, so we are done for now with Neshoba. But I felt it was necessary to be on this board to make sure that we don't continue to do things like we've done in the past in this town. And that's why we looked at all the different options that we did, whether they were do nothing, which is probably the worst thing we can do. I say that because in the past, we've done things that were short-term. The renovation in 2000, I think personally, was a mistake. I do not want to do the same thing now. That's why I joined this committee and looked at the different options, whether it was renovation addition, did not work, was much too more expensive, took longer. It ultimately ended up that the new school is the right way to do it, maximize our funding, and not continue to make the mistakes that I've seen in my lifetime in this town. I can't, I'm paying the same amount of additional taxes, and we don't have any children in the school anymore, thankfully. We just, we have to move forward. And after two and a half years, this is the right plan, and this is the right way to spend our tax dollars. The taxes are going to increase. If we vote no tonight, we are going to have to do something to that building. There have been a lot of talk about the roof and all these things that have not been addressed over the last few years. A lot of that reason is, we've been in this feasibility study. So had we come forward and spent money on a roof, rather than just patching it, but did a full replacement, everybody would be saying to us, why did you just waste all that money when you're going to be putting up a new school? So these big projects have been accumulating. That's where we're at now, saying we're at about $110 to $120 million, just to fix the problems we have. But it doesn't even fix all the problems. The biggest problem is the educational spaces. And those are in the part of the building that, as a building committee, we looked at, we just can't do anything with that part. We looked at, how can we save the rest of the building? The stuff that was just done, right? In 2000, we built this stuff. Well, let's save it. When we looked at the numbers, looked at what was done, looked at even the changes that had to be made to those things since 2000, it just didn't make sense. It didn't make financial sense. So that in a nutshell is why we need to move forward and put this new school in. Thank you.
Thank you. Were you stretching legs, Steve, or looking at, okay. Was something else you wanted to answer?
No, no, I'm all set. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
I'm going to ask you, since you were up already asking a question, and these two people haven't spoken, no, just if you would, don't get out, don't leave, but just get at the end of the line. And then, before you start, Mr. Quill, I need to ask, Mr. Carr, anybody in the gym that is looking to speak?
There is nobody in the gym.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Quill.
John Quill, 45. Let's find out. Listen, when this first came out, I saw that number, and I said, Tim, this is a pretty big number, $241 million. So I decided, you know, we need to get a reference, or at least I wanted to get a reference, so we could share, at least for the town, let's get a reference. So I called some friends up at the North Middlesex District, which is North Middlesex High, Townsend, Pepperel, Ashby, and Townsend. Same student body, same situation. High school built in the 60s, they just built a new high school. So I called a couple of people, I said, okay, what did it cost you guys to do this? Right? So they built a new high school five or six years ago, got 1,000 students. $98 million. $45 million reimbursed by the state. So I looked at your proposal, and I looked at that, and I said, wow, how can those guys in Townsend do it for $98 million? We've had some inflation, but not that kind of inflation. Of course, for my grandchildren, children, I'd love to see a great school here approved. But it looks a little fat. And then I said, wow, how did they get almost a 50% reimbursement from the state? And we're looking at about 30. So my thoughts on this thing is, maybe this is a fat cow, and it needs to be readdressed on the spending. It's kind of high. That's my take.
Thank you. Yes.
Hi, Rebecca Young-Jones, 94 Barnes Court. So I wasn't going to talk tonight, but a couple of things kind of really made me a little not happy, let's put it that way. One is that I'm a senior. I plan to live in my house until they carry me out, but I don't know that I can afford to. And I don't know that I want to spend my retirement money on this school. And I'm not giving any better options than what you have just laid out. And I agree with Mr. Quill. I think this is a fat cow. And I'm wondering, what, and all the research that has been done, can you lay out a better proposal for us? And I agree with Mr. Farmer, that maybe there was maintenance that was skipped because you were looking at a new building. But the old building wasn't upkept. So what's going to happen with the new building? Is it going to be allowed to disintegrate over 50 years because we don't want or need to spend the money on it? You don't do that with a house. If you need a new roof, you go get a new roof because it causes rot and damage if you have water coming in. If you need new windows, you go get new windows. So I'm just saying this because I'm between a rock and a hard place, and I don't want to spend money on something that is a fat cow. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. In regards to those comments and the speaker before that, I can't speak to North Middlesex. I can't speak to the veracity of those figures. I can speak to the numbers that I think, if you use your handheld device tonight, you will see that what I'm about to tell you is the absolute truth. Look at other, look at other school districts in our Commonwealth and what they're paying for a new build. Arlington High School, $290 million. Somerville High School, which by the way, which by the way, couldn't partner up fast enough with the MSBA when their accreditation was put in jeopardy. Lowell High School, $300 million.
We're not Lowell.
We are not Lowell.
All right, I'm going to, I'm going to tell everybody, if you want to speak, make your way to the microphone. Otherwise, please contain yourself. If you can't, you'll be escorted out.
If you want to look at what I would consider a peer institution, look at Stoneham High. They started their project at approximately $198 million. And with inflationary increases, they had to go back to their town meeting, they had to ask for additional funds, they had to seek additional funds from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to offset the additional costs that they incurred during COVID and what have you. So to suggest that this is some sort of fat cow is just inappropriate, and it's not consistent with the information that one can easily find on the Mass School Building Authority's website. They handle all of these projects, and those are the numbers that you'll find there. Two things you might want to consider. If you're, if you're on the fence about this, there are two things that you'll want to consider. One is that in order for us to secure funding from the MSBA, we need to meet a two-pronged test. We have to show need, and we have to show community support. If we can't show both need and community support, and we've already met the need prong of that test, if we cannot provide secure community support, what's going to end up happening is, they're going to withdraw that funding immediately. In 2019, when the Neshoba Regional School District applied for funding, there were 141 school districts in the Commonwealth that applied simultaneously. Only 11 were let into the process. The other thing I want to mention about was about the conditions of the high school. If you look at any of the information that is online and was made available to the public, you will see that the MSBA took the position that the school had outlived its lifetime. However, they were very keen to point out that the actual current conditions and the upkeep and maintenance was very well. So I want to make clear that the issues of the high school are not a question of negligence, it's a question of age. It's a 60-plus-year-old high school, so when 1,000 kids in there on any given day, it's just time for a new high school. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Yes.
I want to thank Mrs. Fromer, I'm sorry, Mrs. Friend, who has a lot of respect by the faculty as a woman of integrity. And I respect her talking about the science labs because when that damn auditorium went up, we were, nothing happened at the science labs, nothing. And I taught there 35 years, and we were told, oh, sorry, we ran out of money. Here's, my concern is mismanagement. That's my concern. But here in Ken, and I had Ken in school, along with two of his three siblings, know the family, his mother used to teach home ec and then general science. I respect the Farmer family. And Ken, you speaking tonight, has brought down a lot of my anxiety about this because that last $19 million was, in my opinion, squandered on. Again, if nobody is, and a friend of mine has grandchildren in that high school right now, if you look at the entrance of that school and what was put into the entrance and up above where the kids come in, nothing, nothing to do with the kids, nothing. I have taught my entire career. Money for education is precious, and I can't say more than that, that it's so precious, and that it was squandered, more than irritates me. Forgive me while I check my notes, I want to be sure. I think, I think that's it. Ken, it means so much to me to have you say what you said tonight. And if you're going to stay on the committee, I will, I will trust this process because I, that $19 million was wasted, just wasted. And now I'll be quiet.
Okay, we do have a speaker in the gym, so, yes, please identify yourself.
Robert Alex.
Hold on a second, Rob, it's, microphone's not on. Try it again.
Robert Alex, 61, Blue Meadow Drive. I'm, Mr. Moderator, I ask that we call motion on the floor to a vote, please.
So although we have clickers, I'm going to ask for a show of hands on this. Those in favor of moving to a vote, please raise your hand. Okay, those opposed? Opposed or yes? I think we might have one or two opposed, so it clearly passes. Now, regarding voting, as I said, everybody had received a clicker. Amanda, if you would come forward, just explain how it was going to, how it's going to work. We had a logistical problem in that when people were in the cafeteria, I don't think the clickers worked, but nobody's in there now. I think everybody is either here or in the gym. So, oh, sorry, go right ahead.
Okay, super easy. Yes, no are the only two buttons that were.
Yes, no are the only two buttons that work. I know there's three, four, and five. They don't work. You can click them. They're not going to do anything. So yes or no, as soon as I go back, I'm going to open the vote. The moderator is going to open the vote, and you're going to vote. Once you click A or B, you're going to get a message back on your poll clicker. It's going to say, okay. Might take a couple seconds, might take two seconds. Just wait for the okay, and you'll know your vote has come through. And for right now, click any button on your poll clicker just to wake them up. You can see there's probably nothing on your screen. If you just press a button now, you're just going to wake it up. It's going to start talking to the receivers. And then when he, once the vote's open and he asks you to vote, go ahead and vote.
Now, a couple of things. I suspect there's going to be a mass exodus after this vote. We do have three other articles, so I would encourage you to stay for those. As in most important votes, there'll probably be a motion for reconsideration. So if you hear the final vote and you jump in your car to go home, the article could come back if the motion for reconsideration passes. So please keep that in mind when you are figuring out your exit strategy. When you do leave, there's a bucket or a Tupperware bucket outside, and I doubt you were coming back. Okay.
So there's a bucket at each exit with a Burbank bar and roll, and say, please, 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 put your clicker in it, so we don't lose any.
Does we pay for them?
Correct.
Okay, so now we're ready to vote, so the green button is yes, you're in favor, and no. Okay, so you can proceed voting. We'll start now. We'll give you 20 or 30 seconds, and then we'll halt the voting. I believe that it registers, you can change your vote right up to the time that we stop. So if anybody's playing, you know, back and forth with the clicker, just be reminded. All right, I'm going to say five seconds to get your final vote in. Okay. Stop the voting, please. And while we're waiting for the tally, regardless of the vote, thank you very much for the Neshoba Regional School Committee, the Building Committee. No, this is not something that you just draw up overnight. Okay, we had a total of 311 votes, 233 in favor, 78 opposed. As I said, it's a majority vote, so clearly it passes. Mr. Gleason.
Mr. Moderator, Joseph Gleason, 126 Brazel Lane, Lancaster, Massachusetts. Hereby move for reconsideration of Article 1, the Town of Lancaster, Massachusetts Special Town Meeting Warrant of September 18, 2023. In support of this motion, I averon state that I voted on the prevailing side of Article 1 of the warrant as aforesaid, and that I have proper standing to bring this motion. The motion is in writing, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you.
A second.
Thank you. So that has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? And this is a majority vote. So if you were in favor of it, you want to defeat this motion. If you wanted to come back before this body for consideration, vote against it. I mean, vote for it to come back. So those in favor, if you, if you are in favor of the motion to reconsider, okay, that's going to bring it back before this body. If you vote no, it's going to put it to rest for the rest of this meeting. Okay. I think we can probably do a show of hands on this vote as well. So those in favor of bringing this back before this body for further consideration, please raise your hand. Okay. Those opposed? So even if I miscounted by 300, I mean, it passed. There might be a handful against, but that clearly passes. So that's the end of Article 1. Thank you. Please. Please stay for the rest of the articles on the warrant. Thank you, members of the school committee. And please drop your clicker in the bucket on the way out. Take care. Yes.
Mr. Moderator, I move to take the time to amend the vote taken under Article 6 of the May 3, 2023 Annual Town Meeting to appropriate the sound of one league $142,000 $169 in the watering price on the operation of the waterfront from the history beginning July 1, 2023, above and below or active any manner relating there to the operating expenses for the watering price are entirely funded by one receiving charter of the warrant or take any other action relative there to. So move to amend the...
I know there's a lot of noise, but we are on Article 2, so that is on the floor. Anybody wish to speak in favor or against? Please make your way to the microphone. Okay, although we have clickers, I think, given the size of the body and the nature of the vote, I'm just going to do a show of hands. So those in favor of Article 2, please raise your hand. Okay, those opposed? We have one dissenter, and so that clearly passes. Next, Article 3.
I move to amend the classification and compensation plan as per to Article 3 of the warrant.
Okay, Ms. Hodges.
Hi, Kate Hodges, Town Administrator. This article requests to amend the 2023 Annual Town Meeting Article 8 by adding a supplemental wage schedule seen almost there. This is for our police auxiliary staff and our fire department. The fire department until this summer had been covered under collective bargaining agreement through the Teamsters Union. The Fire Department Union personnel petitioned the State Department of Labor to decertify, thus removing them from the union. That didn't happen until after town meeting. Those employees now default to the Personnel Bylaw, which was adopted as Article 7 at annual town meeting in May. The bylaw dictates that the classification and compensation plan may be amended for urgent reasons by the Select Board until we can establish a warrant article at town meeting for ratification. This is, the pay scale that you see here is consistent with the pay scale outlined in the union contract. There are no budgetary changes in this action. It is only to ensure that we pay the staff members consistent with the bylaw and the Fair Labor Standards Act. The Select Board recommends affirmative action.
Thank you. Discussion. Okay, we're ready for a vote. Those in favor of Article 3, please raise your hand. Those opposed, please raise your hand. Okay, we have a couple noes, because that clearly passes. Article 4. Is this a, is the planning board, is somebody from the planning board? Mr. Streeter. I'm sorry, you're going to introduce the article?
The article is as printed in the warrant. It is to revise the current bylaw for accessory dwelling units. The Planning Board approved the following report on July 24, 2023. In accordance with MGL Chapter 48, Section 5, the Planning Board opened a public hearing on July 24, 2023, on which date the public hearing was closed to review Article 4 on the warrant for the special town meeting to be held on September 18, 2023. This article was proposed by the Lancaster Planning Board. Chairman Frank Streeter made a presentation at the public hearing about the proposed zoning change. The article proposes that the town change its existing accessory apartments bylaw to allow accessory dwelling units under 1,500 square feet by right instead of by special permit. At the hearing, the Planning Board accepted residents' comments. Members of the board expressed their approval of the benefits to the town of this revision. The board's comments included that the byright process is simpler than requesting a special permit, which should facilitate residents' ability to create these units. While accessory apartments do not add to the town's subsidized housing inventory for DHCD's calculation of the town's percentage of deed-restricted affordable units as defined by law, that's in relation to the 40B status. These units do provide another source of relatively affordable housing, which the town certainly needs. This change will facilitate the creation of housing that could allow Lancaster seniors to stay in town in supportive living situations. The Planning Board unanimously recommends that town meeting approve this article. Frank Streeter, Chair, Lancaster Planning Board.
Okay, just, yeah, thank you. We kind of got ahead of ourselves there. I don't know that you actually moved the question, so, but you were on a roll, so I kept you keep going. So if you perhaps move it, and then somebody will second it, and...
Well, now you've all heard my report. I will move the question.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, comments on the article, please? Yes.
Victoria Petracca, 67, Willa Meadow Drive. I'm speaking on behalf of the Affordable Housing Trust that I chair. We unanimously endorse this article. It's very important that we lift the red tape on accessory dwelling units in Lancaster, and we ask that you vote yes on Article 4 this evening. Frank Streeter pretty much said everything that I was going to say tonight, so thank you, Frank. We ask for your yes vote to get this done and put it into our bylaws. It's a way for us to keep Lancaster affordable. As Frank said, it doesn't add units to our SHI, to our subsidized housing inventory, but it creates small rental units dispersed throughout the town, which is incredibly important. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, we're ready for a vote. All those in favor of Article 4? Thank you. Those opposed? I will say unanimous. Thank you. Are there any other business to come? Any other business to come before the meeting this evening?
I move adjourn the meeting.
All in favor of adjourning? Just solving, then, anybody opposed? Thank you very much.